United States of America, into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Kendalora.
Here.
Councilor Rose.
Councilor Angeloni.
Here.
Councilor Caprio.
Here.
Councilor Duddy.
Here.
Councilor Esposito.
Here.
Councilor Fawnin.
Here.
Councilor Pucci.
Councilor Wentworth.
Here.
May I have a motion to approve the February 21st, 2012 Special Water Pollution Control Authority Agenda and Regular Town Council Meeting?
I have a correction to make on page two, item 4A. It should be Councilor Angeloni instead of Councilor Rose in the first line and the second line.
So noted. Ropa.
Mayor Kendalora.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Caprio.
Yes.
Councilor Duddy.
Yes.
Councilor Esposito.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin.
Absol.
Councilor Wentworth.
Here.
I'm going to move on the agenda to new business, item A. Tonight we have the Girl Scouts of the USA 100th Anniversary Proclamation, and we'd all like to welcome the young Girl Scouts here this evening. Councilor Angeloni is going to read the proclamation.
Proclamation of the Girl Scouts of the USA celebrates 100-year anniversary. Whereas on March 12th, 1912, the first Girl Scout meeting was held in Savannah, Georgia, and this meeting was led by Juliette Gordon Loeb, founder of Girl Scouts of the USA, after visiting the founders of both Boy Scouts and Girl Guides in England. And since this first meeting, more than 50 million girls have participated in the Girl Scout movement during their childhood, and that number continues to grow as Girl Scouts of the USA continues to inspire, challenge, and empower girls everywhere. And whereas, there are thousands of Girl Scouts in Connecticut, and through its membership in the World Association of Girl Guides and Girl Scouts of the USA is part of a worldwide family of 10 million girls and adults in 145 countries. And whereas, Girl Scouts is the largest, longest-running, and most effective leadership program for girls in the nation and the world. And 69 percent of current women U.S. senators and 65 percent of women in the House of Representatives were Girl Scouts as girls. And 55 percent of all women astronauts are former Girl Scouts, and former Girl Scouts have flown in more than one-third of all space shuttle missions. And whereas, an estimated 80 percent of women business executives and business owners were once Girl Scouts, and countless women educators, scientists, and women in the media and performing arts discovered their passion and talents as Girl Scouts. And 64 percent of today's female leaders listed in Who's Who of American Women in the United States were once Girl Scouts. And whereas, Girl Scouts in the 1900s developed the same core values while learning housekeeping and forestry badges as girls today learn while earning computer technology and financial literacy. And Girl Scouts develops girls of courage, confidence, and character who make the world a better place in accordance with its mission. And now, therefore, be it resolved that we are proud to join Girl Scouts of North Branford in celebrating the 100th anniversary of the Girl Scouts of the United States of America.
Thank you, Councilor. Would you, young ladies, like to come forward and take a photo with the council?
We have the mayor. You guys want to move over?
We'll just let the mayor have the honors.
Yeah. The mayor have a bar.
It's not the first time I've ever shadowed by women.
One, two, three.
Good job.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Council. Thank you. 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 Now, with the Water Pollution Control Authority Agenda, item three, Correspondent Citizens' Unfinished Business Discussion in Action Regarding A Sanitary Sewer Special Connection Fee.
Good evening. This is a continuing item. We've had some discussion on the overall special connection fees. It seemed like a general consensus for the last meeting. We're looking to a possible reduction of the special connection fees for commercial, industrial users, try to soften the blow for, you know, for the development. And what I did, it's really on the last page, you can sort of see, I put together a spreadsheet looking at basically, on the left, I listed the typical use, single-family residential apartments, age-restricted residential units, office uses, and industrial uses for various sizes, number of apartment units, square footage for office and commercial and industrial uses. And you can look at a spreadsheet showing one, first one there is the existing, the existing regulations are written, basically $4,000 for the first five units. This is for commercial, industrial, and age-restricted residential units. And $2,000 for units thereafter. Residential units are all at $12,300 per unit, whether single-family, duplex, or apartment condominium. The first revision I looked at is just changing that to $4,000 for first unit, $2,000 per unit thereafter for the commercial and industrial users. The third one is $4,000 for first unit and $1,000 per unit thereafter, just dropping a little bit further. And basically, if you read across, it pretty much drops the rate for age-restricted units, office units, a little bit. You can see the comparison between the number of units and the projected fee. I also threw in there a possible revision number three. I think Al Rose had a comment, and I tried to address it through there. Charge a little more, charge more for the first unit, and then a lower, a much lower rate for each additional unit. The idea maybe that they have, you know, if sewers weren't available, they have to put a septic system in there anyway, they have to do some infrastructure, but not trying to, you know, hit the development for, too hard for additional units. And the number I put in was 12,300 for the first unit, some of it will be half a resident, residential unit, $1,000 per unit thereafter. What that does is, that's sort of like the, for the low number of units, like a one or two equivalent unit type development, it's actually higher than the existing projected rate. But as a development gets a little larger, there's more units involved, then it's less than existing, but higher than either of the proposed revisions number one. And again, this is spreadsheet, so you can mull it over. I mean, we're not under any tight timeframe to get it completed, but I feel a little of input in terms of, any feeling in terms of, we're going in the right direction? Is there something else we should look at in addition to it? Again, general trend is trying to soften the blow to any protected industrial, commercial development town.
Kurt, in your tenure here, it's roughly, I'm not asking for a scientific response, but how many units do you typically see in normal commercial development we get in being built? I'm thinking usually strip center, or is it a combined use residential on the second story with commercial uses on the first? Approximately how many units would you anticipate would be the normal development project?
Yeah, and I'm thinking sort of the, you know, five, for commercial, five to 10,000 square feet is more the norm.
About five units standing, what you're saying?
Yeah, you know, five to 10 units. You know, sometimes it's a second-story development, but somewhere in that range of five to 10 units for commercial. Industrial, generally they're maybe a little larger, but we've seen lots, you know, some small little developments coming through. They, they're probably still in the five to 10,000.
So the 12,000 for the first unit with either four or one or whatever for additional units would seem to be counterproductive, really. It would be discouraging to that developer of a small project of one, two, or three units as opposed to charging maybe four to $6,000 for the first unit, and then perhaps $2,000 for the next, hopefully four to nine units if we had a typical five to 10 unit commercial development.
Yeah, and you can see that, that's what it does do. They get the lower end, it definitely hits, you know, they get.
But we shouldn't discourage them, right?
Right. And again, I just wanted to show it, I think Al did sort of make a comment, and I figured that was about the best way, just for illustrative purposes, trying to show what it would do if you, you know, that's another alternative. I'm not endorsing one or the other, but they all have their own little, again, that last on the right, they all sort of trail off a little bit and drop the rates. The other one I just do have to throw out, we talked about, we could do this over time, if we feel it's advantageous, simple over a 10-year period, and underlining this rate. We talked about that, we haven't gotten to the real details of it, we're sort of in the concept stages as well. And the other one, because we have, we sort of have an obol on the front of us for pre-existing, non-conforming, undersized residential things. One thought, Rich and I sort of talked about a little bit, just threw it out there, is the potential to maybe boost that, the same thing as the age-restricted, which we give a little bit of, which we do give a rate to, the age-restricted residential units. Somehow recognize the fact that it's been there all along, this potential, treat it that way. Just throwing it out there for any block consideration. I don't have a strong recommendation one way or the other, but you know, what could the goal change our offices?
Can you explain to me why you didn't do anything with the apartment condominium, the apartment condominium for five and single, I know the single-family residence, I know that. You didn't move anywhere on the second and the third group?
Yeah, and I kept residential the same at that point.
Yeah, I understand residential. I don't understand the other two, because that's the ones we were trying to figure out, why they should be that high. Have you figured out anything at all on those?
Well, again, like I said, for the pre-existing residential units, if they're unsized, the thought was maybe treating them the same as age-restricted, which is a significant reduction. If you look at age-restricted.
Yeah, I see.
If we were to group the pre-existing, non-conforming type residential structures within there, they receive that same benefit of a lower per-unit assessment.
And why didn't you do that with the apartment condominium and for five and 20?
That would be for new construction. New construction.
For new construction?
For new construction. We're trying to separate.
New from old.
New from old.
Yeah, I understand.
And take care of the old ones and plan appropriately for the new ones.
Right.
Well, what about the old ones that are there? You haven't done anything? If they want to add on or something, do something else?
If they have one on, then.
If they just want to have sewers?
Right. I mean, we're trying to address, sort of, what's there, trying to get some. If they want to, excuse me, if they wanted to have sewers and they're pre-existing, they would fall into the age-restricted category.
But age-restricted, what, just for the elderly people, or just?
No.
No categorization.
No, just to put it in that category.
For the one on Branford Road, for example, that's pre-existing, would be treated under one of these formulas as pre-existing, and the unit charges would come way down. If they wanted to add on to that.
So that's where the age.
That would be new construction.
Okay.
It's a non-conforming existing unit.
Right. But trying to acknowledge, you know, some of these pre-existing, yeah, the obol that's out, and that's, that was sort of the talk Rich and I had, and we just throwing it out there for consideration. And that's a finite number.
Yeah, I know.
There's only a certain number of those who will ever hook up to sewers that are multifamily, so it's a manageable number.
So you were trying to get it into a classification that we already have, so that we didn't have new, we didn't have to come up with new, a new category or a new section? You just classified them that way?
Right. And this is a, this fee schedule, depending on which one is, as you said earlier, it's a planning tool for economic development, and it should conform to the plan of development. You have certain areas that will be available for multifamily housing, but there's a cost for that. They're high-end users, and they're going to pay a higher, higher fee to connect. But if they're age-restricted, then they get the benefit.
Okay.
All right. Can you carry this on?
Yeah, we're gonna have to talk about this more, Kurt.
This is on the agenda for Finance Subcommittee, as well as we have some further discussion that.
Thank you, Kurt.
And Kurt, before we get off WPCA, we need to call for a special meeting for March 20th. Yes, we have Gale Drive Sanitary Sewer Extension schedule. Discussing with Rich, the idea would be best not to put it on the April meeting, but there's a lot of other things on there. We could have a special WPCA meeting at the next Town Council meeting, but March, on March 20th. There's a half dozen property owners, we'd know if I could be in public hearing. Just trying to include it, that being.
What do you have for the people down that road? Are they all in favor of this, or?
I have three in favor. I mean, last thing, three in favor, one opposed, and two, no responses. So I set out, the rest is going to be public hearing again, starting again this morning with your, so we, you know, trying to get a consensus on this whole thing. Thank you.
So do we need action?
No.
Yes.
Do you need a motion to?
A motion to?
To add that to the agenda? Have a special meeting?
WPCA, Special WPCA meeting, seven o'clock on March 20th.
20th, 20th, for Gale Drive.
I make a motion to have a special meeting for the WPCA public hearing at 7:00 PM on March 20th regarding Gale Drive.
Second. Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Duddy. Ropa.
Mayor Kendalora.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Caprio.
Yes.
Councilor Duddy.
Yes.
Councilor Esposito.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Wentworth.
Yes.
New Business Discussion in Action. Citizen Statements and Petitions. Regular Town Council Agenda. Reports of Committees, Boards, and Commissions. Item A, Potato and Corn Festival Update.
Mr. Mayor, at the request of the council, this item was added as a committee report, and included in the package is the financial information that was, had been previously provided by email, and also to be included in potential discussion tonight. I did attend the Potato and Corn Festival Committee meeting that was held about a week and a half ago, and everything is moving forward with publicity. As I have told you before, anything related to facilities and town services comes through me in my office. So that's my primary function, to sit on that committee for that purpose. And anything that has to do with the financials, because it is still town money, goes through the department head, which is Pam Geary. So any purchase requisitions or revenues will go through here per town standard operating procedures and the purchasing ordinance. So all of that is, and has been, the same as in the previous 10 years that the committee has, that the festival has been functioning, and the volunteers are filling in some of the gaps that still need to be filled in. So we're.
How much is in that account beside the $5,000 on here?
I believe there's about $15,000 more from the previous years. Yeah, I can act it one back there.
Okay.
Somewhere around $20,000.
At the last council meeting, I thought the discussion was that we had to appoint the committee, that it, since Pam had stepped down as running it, and it was.
We were gonna get a list of.
The committee members, so that we could appoint them? Remembered the discussion, John?
I do. Yeah, I also had a subsequent discussion with the town manager. He has a different view, and I'm, my view is based on, generically speaking, this was the subcommittee you were talking about, whether there can, whether the Park and Rec Committee, Board, rather, can on their own.
Appointed.
Create a subcommittee of non-current Park and Rec people.
Correct.
And I didn't find any authority for that, but the town manager may want to address that. He discussed that with me afterwards and felt that there was authority to the contrary.
Okay.
But we never really got, we never really got to discuss it amongst ourselves, but.
My take on it is that, aside from Pam not functioning as a director, she, there's always been a committee of volunteers who have run this event and assisted the department in running the event since it was first organized, some almost 10 years ago now. The difference now is that Pam is letting the committee do, that has always been there, the volunteers are, that have always been affiliated with the department in running this particular event, like we have volunteers for the toucher truck, for example, that do the same thing. We have volunteers in the committee that, in the community that do youth baseball or youth football, and some of those are more organized than others, but that's the nature of the recreation business. In this case, Pam has moved from taking a primary leadership role to controlling all of the finances, which, as I told you at the last meeting, is not optional for her. It is, it is town funds, it's being run through her department, which her department is overseen by the Parks and Recreation Commission. Nothing has changed, in my view, from the previous year, only that the volunteers are taking a more active role, and I think it's a, it's a reflection of the priorities of the department and of the commission, in that they are working a bit shorthanded and trying to reprioritize as they go forward. So I think this decision is in keeping with that, but it doesn't fundamentally change the nature of what it was a year ago versus what it is today. And is not, this is not a committee that was created as a subset of the Parks and Recreation Commission. It's a committee of, it's a group of volunteers who want to assist in the department producing this particular event that's being controlled financially by the town, is still a town function. Now, down the road, this committee, and I believe members of the council have expressed in the past, wants to move forward to creating a separate not-for-profit organization, but we're not there yet. And we would, it would still be organized on town property, so the town would still have ultimate control over it, but while all of these funds are coming through the town department, and therefore into the town treasury, and out of the town treasury, it needs to be done absolutely as a town transaction. So nothing has changed since I walked in the door or the previous six or seven years that the committee has been organized, that the event has been organized. And that's my view of how it works.
So you're okay with that, John, that we don't need to appoint a separate committee? Because that's how it all started, so I just want to make sure.
Well, I, you know, I, at the risk of getting involved in semantics, you know, the reaction was that this is a committee of the Park and Rec. If it, if it's to be considered just a, you know, group of volunteers, like it was in the past, that's what we had, and that was okay. But I think, and I think there's a view towards having this, this group become incorporated as a charitable entity, but that's not what it is now. My concern is that they're, that as agents of the Park and Rec, if you will, they're also agents of the town. And I don't know who these, I don't know who these, I can't defend anybody, because I don't know who these people are, but, you know, it's up to the council, I would think, as to whether or not they want to have a hand in it. If they're comfortable with leaving this, this event, which is about $150,000, $60,000 event, but which Pam Geary apparently is primarily responsible for, in the hands of individuals who, whom the Board of, the Board of Parks and Recreation know, they select, and really the town doesn't have anything to do with it, you know, there's nothing in the charter that suggests one way or the other that there can be such a thing. We don't have any boards or commissions that can say, well, we're gonna have an informal sort of planning and zoning group that are gonna go out and look at properties, and then they'll, they'll just report back. Now, there'd be a lot of statutory problems with that, of course, but if you, this, this board and commission is no lesser and no greater than any other board or commission that's created under the charter. And I don't see where we could have, you know, we could have spinoffs based on a certain event, but I'm not, I'm not outraged if that's, if that's the way it's going to work. The town manager has portrayed this as really a continuation of what has been going on, only giving it, it sounds like sort of a transitional existence until they become, maybe in a year or two, a charitable entity. So it's, it's up, it's up to the council, I think.
I got a couple of questions, Rich. The electrical was estimated at 4,000, it came in at 11.6. Is that gonna be a same kind of expenditure this year, or was there some type of infrastructure put in there to keep that cost down?
The infrastructure for electrical was to add, add service to the areas that the art and crafts and a couple of the business vendors were located in. So it was the first time they extended the service beyond the tent limit, to my knowledge, into that craft area, so there was some trenching and some additional service that was run. There's also the temporary hookups that are made onsite during the course of the festival, so the average is about $7,000 to $8,000 for that temporary service.
Okay, because they estimated 4,000 here last year, and they were off, way off. And now I see under the revenue department, you have for amusements, you have revenue from amusement, but there's no cost of the amusements on the other side.
There's no expenditure for the amusement.
We just get a piece, we let them come in, and we get a piece of their.
We get 25% of the gross.
Okay.
Of the gross.
Okay, that's fine. I just want to make sure, because usually you see something on one side, and it's supposed to be on the other side. Besides that, it looks pretty regular, but it's amazing to see how much it costs and how little it's probably turned.
But ultimately, Pam, from what my involvement and watching, has always been involved in the money aspect, like the treasurer type role.
She's done all, the, yeah, she was ultimately responsible for all of it before. She's ultimately responsible for all of it currently. She's ultimately responsible for all of it currently.
The thing is, do we need to give them our blessing as a council to be the committee? Or are we in danger of being sued for something if we don't?
Well, I, I think either way, you're, you're, you know, the, certainly...
The town's insurance is gonna cover it either way, or what do we need to do?
Well, it should be, it should be covered if somebody tells the insurance company that we want it covered and whatever the additional cost, if any, there is. These people are clearly giving the impression that they are representatives of the town. And I, I don't have a problem with that, but if, if somebody, if somebody's, if somebody's tent falls down on somebody or blows away and hurts somebody...
Well, that's what we need to know. Are we gonna, is our insurance gonna cover this?
I think that's, frankly, Vinnie, I think that's the key question.
Exactly.
Not, not what we call them, but are we covered irrespective of what we call them?
Exactly.
There, there just isn't...
That's the main concern. I mean, most of these people on this committee, they're not out to, they're out to do good volunteer work. They're good people from our town. They're not out to do anything that we wouldn't expect them to do the right way. But I'm just concerned about our liability, that's all. And if we're covered, if somebody makes a mistake on this committee or something happens.
Yep.
But I have to believe we should be, I mean, because the people that are...
I believe if we get an insurance rider each year on that, that event.
Right, well...
True.
I'm not sure if we've had it each year. We're pricing it out to charge it to the festival, but generally, from a risk management perspective, the event is a town event. It will continue to be a town event, so therefore the risk is ours, whether we additionally insure it or not. It's covered by our umbrella insurance policies. And every vendor, every food vendor, every concessionaire, every ride operator, all of those other folks who come onto the premise, who provide service, also insure the town against liability first and foremost. So we, we treat it as a town event and the town is named as additionally insured on their policy. The, to the insurance agency of ours or the insurance company, there is no committee. It's a town event.
Okay. So I just need a straight, simple answer. Are we covered or not?
I, I think that, what I would suggest is that we report to our insurance agent exactly what's happened, rather than to, to call it a, a town committee and then subsequently have it disputed because the town, it's, it was, it was a group of volunteers or something of that nature. I think it's pretty simple. I think it's insurable.
Right.
But I think the straightest answer would be not to get caught up in the tyranny of the title here and just say, these are people who are picked by the commission to, to run an operation on a volunteer basis. I, I don't think we have to call them a subcommittee or a committee, because that sort of violates the...
Right, but that's kind of...
The rest of the boards and commissions in town. There's no such thing as having...
Not to, so, Richard, the, around these vendors, like the amusement, they all have their own insurance.
Yes.
You know, do they sign any deal that come on board?
Who's not worried about that part, worried about the people...
That says that they aren't fully insured and guarantee us all this?
They have a rider. They don't step on the premise until we have their certificate of insurance that's been reviewed by my office. And, and I think...
And verified.
Right. And Mike, and we've had people that we've actually kept off until we get that resolved, but I think...
Right. My main concern is just the liability. Besides that naming this or that, that doesn't matter. If we're covered, it's, it's okay. If somebody breaks their leg in a pavo on, on the fairgrounds, are we covered if they so, that's all.
Yep.
Simple.
Yes. And I, I think to Mike's point about having additionally, additional insurance just for the event, it's certainly worthwhile. We've, we've, with this amount of budget...
It's not gonna cost a lot.
No, with this amount of budget, there should be room to have that additional coverage as well, and it might be some peace of mind for everybody.
I did notice the donations went down quite a bit, too.
They have.
Yeah, well, I mean, we're going through pretty hard times.
Yes.
There's no doubt. Okay.
So we will inform the insurance company what has transpired at this point in time, and we will seek to get quotes as we have on additional insurance for the event itself. Anything else?
I'm good.
Well, actually, though, you probably could, wait, what about the volunteers themselves, you know, working?
Well, they probably should be covered through the town's insurance, I would think, since they're, they're...
It would be like someone volunteering at the library. They are covered as a volunteer by our workers' town.
Correct.
So if they get hurt on the job, we have some, some coverage for them, and we haven't recluded their rights if anything else happened.
And it's a tribute to the volunteers to, you know, even break even in these tough economic times with all the work they do. So, you know, to come up with $5,000 or $7,000 or $8,000 on an event as a profit, it's, it's very heartwarming.
And it rained, and I was there last year. We had a couple of days of rain where we lost, you know, I don't know how many hours, but, you know.
And before we get away from this issue, one of the issues that was raised was, was the tent and, and taking off on liability and protection and such. The, the consensus and from the staff and the fire marshal and the building official, public works director, was to have one continuous tent for all of the food vendors. If you recall, with the rainstorm that we had last year, it was, it was a nightmare. So it's now required that a, an additional tent be set up and all of the, the vendor's space will be covered by that tent. So it's all properly sealed and there'll be a gutter between the two tents, so the electrical is protected. So we're eliminating, and that was one of the things that the fire marshal and the building official strongly recommended, and, and the committee has passed that on to the concession applicants. So that will be one of the changes, and that's a good change for...
Well, it's, it's the tent where they have their supplies behind, because they're under the big tent, right.
But the tent where they, they supply and they prep their food and all that would be required to be a standard fire from tent. So I think that's a good improvement.
Okay. Okay, further? Item B, Economic Development Commission.
Do you want, do you have the list for the event?
Mr. Mayor, we, we are, the Economic Development Commission met last evening. There is a, an event on March 16th. It is a business development breakfast that'll be held here in this chamber. Council members and the members of the community involved with business will be, will be invited. And there are, there's a guest list between developers, realtors, engineers, people involved with the development process. There's a guest list of a few, few total pages right now, but there'll be more people added in, for the March 16th event. The commission hopes to have this as a, as a twice yearly event, once now and once in the fall. And they'll be producing a brochure. There'll be a survey. It's already been drafted. The committee member Hodgson was here tonight, was kind enough to draft a brief survey for the attendees to fill out so that the commission can get some feedback on programs and services that would like, the, the community would like to see. And the hope is to have realtors and developers and business owners and so forth network amongst themselves, and we'll see what happens.
It's co-sponsored by the chamber.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's, and it's co-sponsored by the chamber, who was kind enough to give us their, their mailing list, so we have a, in addition to ours, we have a bid source.
And you had said March 16th, 7:30 a.m.?
Yes.
Okay. And it's here at the chamber?
Similar to the state of the town breakfast, we're using the same, similar format.
Very good. Permanent Project Building Committee?
There was a special meeting last night on, regarding the Stanley T. Williams conversion, so we're gonna cover that under unfinished business.
Parks and Recreation Committee?
The Parks and Recreation Committee...
I didn't stay, I didn't know what these things are doing.
The committee scheduled a public hearing. The main thing they're working on in addition to input on the Stanley T. and the Swajic projects, which they had, they received a, a presentation of what the council saw at the last meeting from Nafus and Young on the, on the project update. I filled them in on what the engineers recommending, and they were all on board with that. There were a few questions. The league representatives were there. They had a few questions, all of which were answered by the, by the plans. And Public Works Director was there as well to help with some of those. So that project is moving forward. They will be having a public hearing on March 19th. That is to discuss the field use guidelines and rules and regulations and fee schedules. So they had an informal meeting. They invited all of the league representatives to be there to have some of their questions aired. They made some subtle changes to the rules and regulations, but those will go to public hearing, which is required before enactment by the Parks and Recreation Commission. That's March 19th.
And where is that?
At the community center.
7 o'clock?
I believe, yeah, 7:30 I think.
Thank you. Solid Waste Subcommittee?
Solid Waste Subcommittee's meeting tomorrow afternoon. Basically, we have a RFP that's scheduled to, to go out. It has to be finalized by the subcommittee and then presented to the council. Or, yeah. And basically, that's where we sit now. We met with one of the vendors, as I said at last meeting, and we got some proposals from, some grant, some of the RFPs from South Windsor, and there was a couple of the towns in there. West Hartford, West Hartford looked very, very good. We were going over that, and that, they, they kinda have a state-of-the-art RFP. So we're gonna try to follow that as well as we can and see if we can adapt it to the town in North Hartford, but it looks very good.
Okay. Any questions? All right, thank you, Wayne. Item F, Emergency Communications Subcommittee? The committee, I believe, is going to be meeting Thursday at 6:00 p.m. here, Council Chambers.
We, we met with the director, you know, of CMed, and they're very hot on the town in North Hartford and the facilities that we have. So it, it looks very good. There's certain steps we have to follow to, to get that working, but it looks like it may fall into place pretty quick.
We gonna have any union problems?
Well, that's, that's our next step.
The other item on discussion for the subcommittee meeting would be the status of the emergency communications grant, the upgrade and the simulcast system. So that's moving along, and we're still waiting. By next week, we'll have the final estimates on the Commerce Drive, Tower Conversion, so we're, we're moving that forward at the same time.
Mike, have you heard anymore on the, the narrowband that I know we're testing?
Um, no, I haven't, but we could contact that, that vendor and, and see. But that's, you know, I mean, the system, the system's already up and, you know, the system's already up and the equipment's in order to fit in the narrowband, you know. I, I just don't think every town and every, every, you know, town and state in the United States is ever gonna be able to fit into that 2013 window. I think that window will be extended out maybe to 2015, maybe even 2020 by the time. You know, everybody's in compliance with it. It's such a big, massive undertaking that I, I don't think they'll ever accomplish that.
In addition to what I sent you out with the, with the packet in, in written form, we have a couple of updates to give you on the Stanley T. Williams project. You, you have a, a listing of the budget update, as Rose mentioned. We also have under Road Improvement Program, the town engineers received the consultant's preliminary report, a draft about a 50 to 60 percent completion. All of our roads are being analyzed through a work-study grant from the South Central Regional Council of Governments. They have a consultant that's working on analyzing our roads. So it'll, it'll provide the town engineer with it, and the Public Works Director and the council with an excellent, excellent planning document, and probably will be done sometime in April, I believe is the target. So we've seen, taken, Kurt shared that with me, and it's, it's a very good document and something that will help, you know, and will be able to up, be updated by the town engineer's office as we go forward. So I think that's a good improvement. And there's no charge to the town for any of those consulting services. The bid opening is next week for the Connecticut Route 8139 project, and the town engineer orchestrated a meeting last week with North Hartford Congregational Church and the Connecticut DOT representatives, and if you'd like to get an update.
Yeah, briefly, the DOT basically said that they can't change any of the primary design elements of the project, the road alignment, the road width. That was a concern of Congregational Church primarily, the impact on, on property, you know, at part of the church. The DOT has narrowed that down as much as they can. They can't do it anymore. But they come out of the meeting, some of the landscaping, they have a landscaping plan. I had some input from Ramiro, myself, and others going forward, trying to get a works full plan. Some of the church members are gonna look at that, and the DOT is willing to consider some of the plantings in the, in the church area, which will be the green. They want to modify that, that there's still time to do that and be able to allow that to happen. So that's getting looked at by the church subcommittee, and if they have something that, you know, they want to move forward, DOT is willing to consider it and probably will be able to accommodate it with. So there was a, you know, some places were confident, but again, as I said, the DOT had, you know, major design elements were not changed. Also, it is on our website. There's, there's some nice color renderings that they want to take a look, and they, they were presented to the town council, I think back to September, but they've updated them, and they're accessible by any of the general public as well.
And are they planning on starting, Kurt?
What they said, probably they signed a contract within about 60 days from the middle of, the, the March.
This year or next year?
Sometimes in May, and then, once the contract's signed, they have to sit down with the contractor. Yeah, it could definitely be this summer, things start to happen, exactly when...
Well, that's fine.
But it's, but it's gonna move forward.
Okay.
Also, as a follow-up on Evergreen Woods, those folks were here last town council meeting. The assessor has, is scheduling a meeting to go through with the consultant that, that was involved with the revale, and the Board of Assessment Appeals has them on their docket and will likely conduct a field inspection as well due to the special circumstances. So that's being addressed, and if you've noticed, the Board of Assessment Appeals is doing its annual reviews as, as we speak. Also, on a, on a follow-up note, Montgomery Village, I was asked to review the file a couple of meetings ago and present that information to Montgomery Village Association. What I found, I had done that as of last week, and as I looked at the bond file, the council's information, there is no mention in the bond estimate form or anywhere in the bond file on the retaining walls, sidewalks, or any of the trees in question. So that information was conveyed to Montgomery Village President, and it's not anything different than the town engineer or the building official has been saying. So I'm not sure what else we can expect from them, but I've, I've done all, I believe that I was asked to do for that. The, in your packets on your desk this evening, in addition to the budget that's in the binder, there is the proposal or the, the package from the Dog Park Park proposal, the North Hartford Unleashed, and that packet has come from Dr. Hodgson. And the council should anticipate an agenda item at the March 20th meeting, since the, the organization is looking for a blessing from the town council to, to establish a fund in the town to which donations can be made to support the future Dog Park. So you'll get a chance to review it now, and it'll show up on the agenda two weeks, two weeks from now. Last but not least, we were, I, I hope, fortunate to lock into our fuel prices as of today was the second... was the second, second number that we locked in on, and for this coming fiscal year, July 1st, 2012 through June 30th, 2013, for diesel, we, we will be paying three dollars forty-one and a half cents per gallon, that's with the taxes. Number two, heating oil will be three dollars and thirty-five cents and change a gallon, again with the taxes, and gasoline will be three dollars and fifty-seven cents a gallon with all of the taxes included. That's a rate that's good for the year. And normally, we have been, and some of the council members are familiar with this, we've been playing the float for a number of years, and we've been riding pretty well with that, but given the dynamics of the market, I, this was a chance for us, and a lot of the communities are locking in, and these numbers are right on our budget, so we didn't have to go back. Anthony did not have to change anything on our budget, and we can at least move forward with that comfort.
Is it fiscal year or calendar year?
Fiscal year.
Okay.
These are July 1 numbers.
Okay.
So, we're, we're still on the float now until we hit July 1st.
Oh, okay, so this is effective.
Right, and we're paying a little less than these rates now because we're playing a float price, it's like three twenty-nine on diesel, for example. So, they're, they're close, but I, I think this is the time, given the dynamics, that we should lock it in. And a lot of the other communities around us are doing the same thing. And that's the end of my report, unless there are any questions.
Thank you, sir. Community Events and Presentations. Citizen Statements, Petitions, and Correspondence.
Hi, Davey. My name is Eric Hodgson, and I'm here just to say a few words about our Dog Park. First of all, I want to thank Richard Brannigan for being so receptive to, to just a random person coming to the town and proposing something that, that has, has the ability to raise some anxiety in terms of cost and liability. I'm not going to talk much, because the reason I wanted to just say a few words is that we were in the depression that, that was possible, that tonight would be the night that the Dog Park proposal would be considered, and we wanted to make sure that, and we invited people to come to show their support, and I wanted to give them the heads up that it's not going to be, basically, Richard stole my thunder a minute ago, that it'll be on the next, at the next committee meeting. And also, we hope to have a lot of people to show their support, not because I think there's anything controversial, but we're hoping to fundraise for the cost of the park, and the more people that can come to be supportive, the more likely they'll want to donate money and time and energy to create something that I think will be, will be a success and a positive thing for the, for the town. So, I guess you'll, in your pack, you'll have a lot of information that we provided to really address the main issues of liability, cost, and maintenance, and hopefully, Parks and Rec felt comfortable with the proposal that, that we made to them that addressed those issues, and hoping that everyone will feel comfortable with those, and as we move ahead, we can really do this the right way and make something that's connected to the vast interview of that. So, I look forward to seeing you all next, next week.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Attorney Officer, Citizen Statements.
I would, Roger.
Probably on occasion.
Item 11, Resignations and Appointments.
I'd like to amend the agenda to include an appointment to the Greater New Haven Transit District, because Mary's appointment has already run out during the middle of a lot of stuff, and she is the chairman, so I'd like to add that to, but it's not item.
Item E. Item E.
Yeah, for the Greater New Haven Transit District.
Greater New.
Greater New Haven.
Transit District.
Yeah.
Mayor.
Take one. I have a second. Moved by Counselor Angeloni to add item E, Greater New Haven Transit District, Mary Item A, Rescind Reappointment.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mary, you need to vote on that.
Oh, I'm sorry, roll call.
Mayor Candelaure.
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Caprio.
Yes.
Counselor Duty.
Yes.
Counselor Esposito.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Wentworth.
Yes.
All right, item A, Rescind Reappointment, Michael Duty Agricultural Commission, term has not yet expired.
Some moves.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Fawnin, seconded by Counselor Angeloni, roll call.
Mayor Candelaure.
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Caprio.
Yes.
Counselor Duty.
Yes.
Counselor Esposito.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Wentworth.
Yes.
Item B, Rescind Reappointment of Ryan Van Wilden Agricultural Commission, term has not yet expired.
Some moves.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Fawnin, seconded by Counselor Esposito, roll call.
Mayor Candelaure.
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Caprio.
Yes.
Counselor Duty.
Yes.
Counselor Esposito.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Wentworth.
Yes.
Item C, Correct Term for Appointment, David Palumbo, Police Commission, correct term to expire 12/31/2014.
Some moves. Second.
Moved by Counselor Wentworth, seconded by Counselor Esposito, roll call.
Mayor Candelaure.
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Caprio.
Yes.
Counselor Duty.
Obstand.
Counselor Esposito.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Wentworth.
Yes.
Item D, Correct Term for Appointment, Christopher Cozy, Police Commission, correct term to expire 12/31/2014.
Some moves.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Wentworth, seconded by Counselor Esposito, roll call.
Mayor Candelaure.
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Caprio.
Yes.
Counselor Duty.
Stand.
Counselor Esposito.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Wentworth.
Yes.
Item E, Greater New Haven Transit District, Boyd Mary, Bigelow.
Some moves, sorry, the term will expire in 2014, I don't know them now.
Thank you. Moved by Counselor, seconded by Counselor Esposito, roll call.
Mayor Candelaure.
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Caprio.
Yes.
Counselor Duty.
Yes.
Counselor Esposito.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Wentworth.
Yes.
Item 12, Unfinished Business Discussion in Action. Item A, Charter Revision. Our last meeting, we had talked about starting to put names for this committee. We had already voted on a, I think, seven-person panel.
Correct.
Did we, did we approve the seven-person panel at the last meeting that I wasn't asking?
Well, we didn't approve the people, just the motion. Then it was seven.
We have to reset the clock, I believe.
The clock will start tonight if we do the appointments, correct?
No, if we have, moved to have a commission, we then have thirty days to do the appointments.
So, the clock started ticking at the last meeting.
Right.
But, we made the motion.
We did move to have.
We made the motion to establish the people, we didn't make the motion to establish our mission.
I thought John said it'll start at this meeting.
Right.
You rescinded, your last action was to rescind the appointment of the Charter Revision Commission.
Right.
That's my understanding.
So, no, nothing started running yet.
Right, we, no, we reset, right, we reset the clock for this evening.
Yeah, because you were away, so we.
Movement creation of seven-member commission.
Yeah, not.
How about if we just throw some names into a?
Well, let's, let's set up the commission first.
I have a motion to have a seven-member commission, be of his own Town Council, Town North Hartford, and according to section 7188B of the Minnesota Statute, establishes a Charter Revision Commission to consist of seven members, and is charged to consider the following recommendations. We'll stop it at seven members, I guess?
I'll second that.
Right, and there's gotta be stipulations.
It was two meetings ago, it was recent. No, two meetings.
My discussion. Roll call.
The, yeah, we'll do the roll call first. No.
Okay, roll call.
Yeah.
Mayor Candelaure.
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Caprio.
Yes.
Counselor Duty.
Yes.
Counselor Esposito.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Wentworth.
Yes.
John, I just had a, Rich, I had one quick question, the summary of the statutory requirements, that will be amended by the commission once it's adopted, or this is the?
This is the summary of the state statute.
Andrew, you're talking about this sheet?
The back page of the, the resolution.
That's just the guideline.
Oh, okay. The town attorney's office, the town attorney prepared this for the council.
So, the rules are already set, we just have to put names in.
Do we want to make the nominations tonight, or do we want Al Rose and Don Fuji here?
Well, let's just throw whatever names we have in there, and if they want to add to them.
Well, you don't want to wait for the full counts?
I spoke with both of them, and we've got to move forward. Good. Good. We need to move forward. Right.
So, is it open for nominations then?
Correct. Nominate Joe Fawnin.
I'll second that.
So, Joe Fawnin has been nominated.
One at a time. It should be one at a time.
Right. Yeah, probably one at a time, I would think. Now, I believe, and John, correct me, only one person now from any committee, right, board or commission, now that Joe has been appointed, no one else from any board, commission or committee can be appointed.
One more can be.
One more.
Presumably, you've decided on a seven-person.
Right, more than one third. Have a person, right, okay, so one.
One more.
On the council committee.
Right.
Well, I thought it was elected individual.
Now, it does say. Who may hold another office in the town, not more than a bare majority of these members of the same political party.
Not more than one-third of whom may hold another office, so theoretically, we could have, yeah, two.
Right.
Elected representatives, not more than a bare majority of members of the same political party, so four to three, four to three, with two elected officials in that.
So, the next one would have to be.
Five.
From the other political party, or an independent.
What do you think Al's up for?
I think another.
Cause they're not here.
Oh, I take that back, it's, it's on the basis of the seven, not on the two officeholders. In other words, of the, of the seven who were appointed.
It's gotta be four to three.
No more, it's gotta be four to three.
Yeah.
And that would obviously include people who are not office members.
Not more than two of the seven can be elected.
Correct, correct, but they could both be from the same party.
I nominate Anthony Candelaure.
Second.
Get the two, and then we can just go for four. Take a roll call, any?
I, yeah, we can take a roll call, yes.
We didn't take a roll call.
Where did you take Joe at?
We didn't vote, we didn't do a roll call. Yeah. I'm just gonna bring up a citizen, Roger Muck, to express interest in being on the Charter Revision. I have a couple of citizens' names too, actually, and, want, want to do this first, and then just go through name by name?
Sure.
That's what I think should be better off doing. And then whoever's got a name can throw in their name, and we'll see what happens.
Should we, just thinking out loud, should we do all the nominations at once? Because if we nominate and vote on people, by necessity, by the rules, we're automatically eliminating other eligible people. So, it's, I mean, for example, we've now nominated me and Anthony, which means nobody else on this.
On the council.
Town council can be nominated. I don't know if that's appropriate, or whether or not we should leave it open and get all the nominations out, and then vote perhaps one at a time.
I would suggest, I would suggest the latter, you're all looking for seven people. It's more or less like a, you know, like a, a, a town committee meeting, where you have more than one, you have more people interested in a, in a position than you have positions, so if you wind up with.
Then we'll put up a slate.
Yeah, thank you. If you put, if we have seven, then you're all set. If we have eight, then you definitely have to vote individually, and I'd probably recommend that you vote individually anyway. And definitely, if you try to vote as a whole, and it doesn't pass, you definitely have to vote individually, because there may only be one person that everybody is voting against, and therefore, is being compelled to vote against the whole lot.
So, put up a slate and then vote individually for each.
I would see, I would, I would see if this, I would do that. Sure. I want to vote Liz Kaplan's name in, and Dan Arman's name in.
And nominate Pat Young.
Dan Arman?
Yeah. A R M.
Liz Kaplan, I have a, I can try to.
Pat Young.
Well, now, we have to also watch here because of the, the four-three.
If it's seven.
Yeah.
If it's four to three.
I'd like to nominate Ron Makoski, who's a former councilman, longtime president of the Town North Hartford, himself presidential robe, and has expressed an interest in serving on the commission.
Anthony, I know Joanne Duty wanted to be on that too.
I'd like to nominate Mary Bigelow. I think she has a lot of background in it.
Mary Bigelow.
Yeah.
And Joanne Duty. I'm up to eight, if I have. You should be designating, if you know, the political affiliation, if any, of everybody.
Oh, it was nine, did someone, someone said Roger Muck?
He has a.
Yeah, I meant, I just, I remember Roger has mentioned it several times, that he was interested, and he's not here this evening.
I think it's appropriate to nominate, at least, so I'll nominate Roger Muck, I don't know his political affiliation.
I don't either.
Second.
How about, he's a Republican. And who is the ninth? That's what Joanne Duty, I had, I missed that.
Mary Bigelow.
Mary Bigelow.
Mary Bigelow.
Of course, you could revisit the number seven, you have up to fifteen, so if you wanted nine, and all those nine people, you, you would just have to, you know, rescind the motion. I think your motion contains seven in it, and you could just, you could, you could enlarge it, or, or whittle down the slate.
Yeah, we have nine now, though.
Yeah, you could have as many as fifteen.
What's the breakdown, do we know? Yeah, it looks like you got five or six Democrats.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Considering, I know Ron Makoski was a Democrat for forty years.
Ron's a Republican.
He is. I know his wife is.
Yeah.
His wife is on.
Ron always ran Democrat.
You might be right, you might, he might be right.
He is Democrat.
No, Mary was a Democrat, but she's now unaffiliated. She was a Democrat.
Mary Bigelow?
No, we're talking about Ron Makoski.
You're right.
Yeah, I don't know.
He changed, he was elected as a Republican councilman.
Yes, that was, that was thirty years ago.
Did he change party affiliation?
He, he may have gone independent at some point, but I don't know.
Maybe, maybe we'll.
Mike is right about this.
Maybe we'll have to research.
I just, I never asked him.
I know his wife, I know his wife was, and she always complained that he was a Democrat, so.
Let's put the list together.
Cause we have thirty days, so we can.
Right, we can do it at the next meeting and be done with it, and this way Alan Donald will be here too.
I, I stated that he was a Republican, because I thought so, but I could, if I'm wrong, I apologize, I didn't.
I just, I'm just going by what I heard.
Mary Bigelow's not independent?
Yeah, she's independent.
And, you know, I'm gonna, I know we have a lot of Ds, but I'm gonna mention Penny Seaman. Put her down.
Have you spoken to her?
We all got a vote on this eventually. I, I mean, Rose and I both had spoken to her, but it wasn't, not recently, but.
Like a month ago, six weeks ago.
Actually, this, by not doing, by not voting tonight, this will also give you a chance to contact these people, to make sure they're, they wanna do it.
Right.
And you can always add to this list if you want, if someone else wants to.
We don't have enough Republicans out there.
Yeah, there's certain, there has to be more Republicans, anyway.
Actually, we only have one. Unless Ron, unless Ron is a Republican.
And is Joanne Duty a Republican?
Call for seven?
Yes.
Yeah.
Mike, Joanne's, you know, we got two Rs.
There's a couple, there's a couple, I can't think of their names.
Yeah, I'll nominate Stephen Ophryo.
How's that? Pretty good.
You're gonna second? You're gonna second?
Absolutely, I second.
Ken Ash. Ken Ash was one of them.
The guy with glasses.
Imperado.
Yeah.
Ken Imperado's a good one.
I put Stephen Ophryo too in.
I'd like to get, nominate Ken Imperado.
Second.
Ken Imperado.
Okay, so now we got like enough of each side, right?
And I believe he's an R. I know what he's.
Yeah, we're gonna find out, anyway.
And then, what was the other, I missed one name. Stephen Ophryo.
Yes, we have twelve.
That's enough.
I think that's good, right?
So we'll read the whole list?
All right. I'm gonna start with Roger Muck, Joe Fornin, myself, Anthony Candelaure, Liz Kaplan, Dan Arman, Pat Young, Ron McCosky, Joanne Duty, Mary Bigelow, Penny Seaman, Ken Imperado, Steve Ophryo. That's twelve.
Right, and somebody's just going to check the registered voter roll to verify party affiliations.
I think what I could do is probably send this list right to Lisa, maybe, and then, one way or the other, I'll get together, meet with Richard and Gina about contacting people.
Yeah, if they, if they wanna come here and make a statement or something.
Right, invite them to the next meeting, or maybe invite them for the March twentieth meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, with the exception of Roger Muck, I think I have all their party affiliations, but I don't know what he is, Penny Seaman, I don't know.
I saw him last Friday, and he said he wanted to be on it, and I didn't even think.
And he sat at the last council meeting also.
Yeah, he's reminded.
We may have, we may have to add one or two names by the next week, you know, depending on party affiliation.
Yep.
Okay.
So now, the resolution, we're gonna obviously still keep it at seven, right?
Well, no, we might decide to change that. If you decide to go to nine.
We could amend it at the next meeting.
You know what, there was one.
Or is it solidifying?
The original motion, you know, my suggestion would be to probably rescind the motion, like we did a couple.
To need a blanket.
Well, no, do another motion to.
If we decide we want more than seven.
We're sort of, we're sort of, I don't know which is the cart and which is the horse, but you, but you may wanna decide how many you wanna have, after you decide the number of people that you're interested in having, and.
You know what?
Does this resolution start the clock?
It does, it does, but if we rescind it, we would, we would stop the clock and start a new motion.
We're gonna do it at the next meeting. No, what is, yeah.
And you know what?
So you'll have.
But one more name, Frank Mentone, and he's an independent.
I second.
I forgot all about it.
I second.
Frank Mentone?
Yeah.
He had expressed interest.
The next number is thirteen.
Yeah, it's thirteen.
And thirteen's my lucky number. Okay.
My only concern is fourteen days will have lapsed, with having this many names and having a resolution of seven.
We need to make a decision in the next meeting, Andrew, and that's it.
But we can change it at the next meeting, we can rescind it at the next, and make it.
Okay, I thought you, John, you were implying that tonight you would have to rescind that.
We also wanna put it on November's ballot, so we don't wanna drag our feet too much.
Well, you have to see the timeline.
So we don't have a special election that costs us more money.
And then vote on the people who are.
Right. Right.
All right, tomorrow, I'll give these names to Lisa, and then.
And some of them might not be interested, so, that's why you can't really change the motion right now, until you see once, what, how many you end up with.
Right. Okay.
May I ask a question?
Can you put Ken Ash on there?
Some of these had seconds from some members, and some didn't.
Wait, what?
I just wanna make sure how I'm.
I'll second anyone that was not seconded, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Mike has one more name, Ken Ash.
I know you meant, you talked about.
Yeah, we didn't, we talked, right.
I second.
Okay. So now we have fourteen.
Hey, can we just check with the people, somebody that knows?
I'm gonna try, tomorrow, type out this list.
Who nominated them? Just check with your people, and see if they'd be willing to serve them, so we don't appoint somebody, and then have to. Yeah, we have, we have four definite that.
Liz Kaplan, Dan Arman, and Joe Fornin are definite. Stephen Ophryo, you guys gotta ask him, cause he's in your party.
Yeah, there's a few.
He will do it? Awesome. He's a good man.
Okay.
What about the direction in terms of what we want them to consider, the power to indicate what it is they should be considering? Clearly, I think the referendum should be, budget referendum should be topic number one.
Right.
And then Lisa Valenti had sent.
Lisa what had sent?
Had sent three items, they're like housekeeping items, that need to be cleaned up in the charter. So there was that, and then there was the Board of Ed, when their terms start after the election, so that we don't end up with a lame duck.
I was thinking about having police commissioners elected, instead of appointed, to be honest with you. I think that, that might be an interesting thing.
Fire, fire commissioners should be elected.
This way, they got some skin in the game, too, and they gotta put themselves out there, just like we do.
Right.
Just a thought. Right?
And the other item on Board of Ed was changing the number on the Board of Ed, the number of members to an odd number.
What is it now?
It's six.
Six.
Six to seven. Or you can go down to five.
Yeah, we did talk about nominating the police commission, but first and foremost, I think the referendum.
That's a big one.
And we're hoping to get this done for November.
Oh, we got it.
We have to look at the timeline.
Right, we got it, we gotta move on this now. We've been farting around long enough.
Cause you need two public hearings.
Right.
Well, it'll save us a lot of money, too.
Now it's time to stop doing what we're doing, and just do it.
All right, so next is what the high school roof.
So next, what we'll do is, we'll get, contact the people, have them come to the meeting, make sure they're interested. All right, let's move on to North Hartford High School roof.
Mr. Mayor, the only thing, there's really nothing new to report. We're still working on finalizing the request for qualification for the architect for the second phase of the project. There's a meeting scheduled with State Representative Candelaure, the superintendent of schools, Don Winicki, Anthony Esposito, and myself Thursday morning, to talk about the status of the funding requests on the previous project that was done last summer, and the other reimbursements on the NBIS project. So we hope that that will be a productive meeting, and there may be some other action items coming out of that. That's Thursday morning.
So that's on the reimbursements on the town side also? Cause we got notification a while ago, that I think some of our town grants had to be closed out, some of our Board of Ed grants had to be closed out, right?
Right, there's.
Do we have a status on that yet?
There was the old grant that we had to apply on the.
Code compliance.
Code compliance, that Anthony had updated some information, and talked to Paige Farnum from the State School Facilities Unit, so I believe that's on its way to being resolved. And NBIS project, we updated that with the computer system at the state, so that's on its way to being resolved. And the high school roof project, phase one and phase two, is a question. Does that answer?
Cause we, that guy came to one of our meetings, and with all the projects.
Yeah. I have the whole list, which I forwarded to Richard, Anthony, and Don Winicki, and actually, I was also gonna attend Thursday morning with State Representative Vincent.
Yeah, just to make sure.
Make sure, right. But yeah, Mike, we do have everything compiled.
Mr. Imperado's emails have come through today, so we appreciate his help, and it's allowed us, Anthony's worked directly with him, too.
And right now, State Rep, the rep is getting involved. We're moving along quickly, cause there's a retirement coming up in Hartford, and we're trying to get it all tied up.
Oh, good. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, item C, Stanley T. Williams conversion.
Council members, you have in your packets the updated, for tonight, in your, in your file, you have the most recent updated budget that was the result of the meeting of the Permanent Project Building Committee, special meeting of the Permanent Project Building Committee, held last night. So. What you have in your packet is the Stanley T. Williams conversion project, and attached to it is an updated budget that was developed at a special meeting last evening by the Permanent Project Building Committee, in conjunction with the representatives from the Parks and Recreation Commission, and staff, myself and Pam Gary included, and Michelle Knackway. And if you recall, at the last meeting, and in previous submissions to you, we had the construction, the, the architect's project estimate for the full boat project, which was a little over six hundred thousand dollars. In addition to that, I had supplied a bare bones approach to the same listing, using some, using some of those values, and by bare bones, it was bare bones, there were no frills, there were, and, and the question was raised, did this bare bones approach accommodate all that was necessary to get in the door from the agency's perspective? Was it, and that question was raised by the Permanent Project Building Committee. Did we need to allocate more money, because we know we only have two hundred thousand dollars in grant money? Could more money be allocated to this project, so we can do the project correctly, and accomplish all that we need to accomplish to get in the door? Not a lot of frills, but some things that would be necessary to occupy the space, and to use it the way our seniors should be accustomed to it being used, and our community center is, is being used currently. So what the committee did last night was to go over each of the items between the architect's estimate and my bare bone summary, and tweak both of them to go line by line, so that each room was, was accommodated. And in terms of the process, your representative, Councilor Angeloni, was in attendance along with, with the mayor, so the, the process was a little bit painful, but I, I think, in essence, the bottom line was that all of the needs were addressed, and, and some of the nice-to-do things are being put off for a future date. For example, new flooring in, in the gymnasium would be a wonderful thing to have done, but there's just no room in the budget for another twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars worth of flooring.
Well, the way I put it is, we have phase one and phase two. Hopefully, we get this, you know, Steve.
Is phase one gonna get the rec center down there, or no?
I, I think so.
Yeah, phase, phase one, the intention is to be able to move the rec center and the senior center into that building.
The senior center needs to move that away.
To free up those other, the two buildings that are existing in now, so that we can either market them, to, to rent them out, sell them, do something with them. So the things that were added from Richard's original list, which was approximately a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, it was a total of sixty-five thousand dollars additional, and the items that were added were ADA, ADA doors in the, in the main entrance, it's a double set of doors there, so to make one set inside and out with the push button. Flooring in, it would be in section G and H, which is the multipurpose rooms, to make one of them, so that it's either carpeted or rubber flooring for programs that they need in there. And also, the partition that is in that room currently is not in the best condition, and to be able to separate the rooms for multi-purpose, multi-programms, so it would need a new partition. It has already the header and everything in there, so it's replacing the partition. And then, the FF and E account originally had thirty thousand, and with the cost of moving the equipment, disassembling the, the exercise equipment, cardio and strength training at the existing community center, and moving it up there, you need professional movers to do that, and they have more now than what they had before. So moving costs would definitely be higher this time, going up there, and then just having some additional, that was increased by twenty thousand dollars, which pamped up from thirty thousand to fifty thousand, was an equitable, equitable number. And then, there is lighting, roughly twenty-some thousand lighting that was already provided, and in order to do some extra to add in rooms that might be a little bit dimmer than what they, we might need to add some ballast, so there's a nine thousand dollar additional lighting figure to be used wherever they feel it would be best appropriate. It's not specifically for one room. So it was basically an additional sixty-five thousand dollars that was added on to the original estimate. The rest of the costs are basically overhead contingency, additional architectural fees on top of that. So that's where additional expense comes in, on that. Richard, the difference between the numbers last night and yours is that the contingency figure last night that was given was twenty-five thousand, and you have thirty-eight in here, but the number that was talked about at the meeting was twenty-five.
So that's my, that's the difference, so, okay, thank you.
So we're talking one three fifty?
Three hundred, well, two ninety-three, not seventy-one.
Well, if you, Rose, if you go back and you, you take that, you use a lower contingency number, twenty-five, right?
Right, that brings it down to two eighty, roughly. I mean, I don't, no, I mean, they just threw out that number last night, the twenty-five, I don't know how that was derived, but that was the number.
So that's what we're short, is it two eighty?
Yes.
Yeah.
We have two hundred, and what we had done at a previous meeting is, we had, Anthony had prepared a library summary of money that's already been incurred in our debt service schedule, of three hundred and fifty-one thousand, and we have had some discussions about the, the balance of work that has to be taken out of there, and one that we've mentioned here tonight was the, the tower work on Commerce Drive, coming out of this allocation. There is also an urgent need for the fire department to have some hose replaced, as part of their capital, capital expense to catch them back up. The chief is doing some this year, but he'd like to do a little bit more, so there may be some additional use for that before the end of this particular fiscal year.
We already took the high school roof out of what originally was the library.
What we're gonna do this year?
Right.
Right.
Okay.
And.
And then there was money left over that we could start the architectural.
Right, and the high school roof still has a balance of about fifty thousand dollars, to my memory, in that, in that account that already came out of this money. So the request that you have in front of you is to, from the building committee, is the two hundred and. is a $293,000 reallocation of, of this funding so that the architect could go forward and, and complete the design. Because we're not doing any further design until there's, there's a commitment made. And Anthony, I believe that as we did the first time, we would have to work with bond counsel to...
A portion of it will be interest income, but a portion will be reallocation of the bond proceeds.
Right. So we would have, if, if the council has no objection, we would ask bond counsel to draft resolutions for us as they did free of charge last time after some conversations. And we would have that on the next agenda, but in, in the meantime, we could go, we could give the architect at least the permission to go forward with the HVAC design, which will take some time, probably the longest part of it.
And that whole deal installed is going to be 175?
175 is, was the estimate.
And that's what his drawings and all that good stuff too, complete?
Yes.
Okay. I, I don't see a problem, as far as I'm concerned, of starting that end of it. But with budget time coming up and with the way things look, I, I don't know if I want to jump right into throwing this other $293,000 right into this whole deal here.
I, I just got a thought on that, Vinny, give me one second.
Sure.
In order to free up those two buildings down on the other side of the tracks, we have to get one of them up and running.
Right.
So, you know what, we're gonna spend a little bit more up here getting it running, but we have the whole recourse of, of the other two buildings. But if we, if we don't spend the money...
Right.
We're gonna be sitting on three buildings that we can't really use to its capacity.
The only problem with that, I mean, if you want to rent them out, that's fine and dandy, but right now, as far as the real estate market, I don't think I'd want to be selling anything right now. And when you can wait two, three, four years and probably get a lot more money for these buildings. It's something to think about.
Right. And we got to keep in mind with the DOT project that's starting, that's going to change that area also.
But on, but on the flip side, if we give the go-ahead to start with the HVAC, but don't...
Right, I don't see a problem with that.
Yeah, but don't give the go-ahead to do the rest of the thing. Why would we do the HVAC if we aren't going to do the other work to move into that building?
Well, we have the 200 sitting there for that purpose, right?
Right, but if we, if we don't, if we don't, if our intention, or it ends up that we don't move into the building because we don't allocate any money to it, then...
Well, I don't, you know, I just, I don't think we should jump on it right now. It's, you guys want to vote on it, that's fine, I'll vote on it too. I think we still have a lot of question marks in a lot of different places, but, you know, if you want to pull a vote, we'll pull a vote. I don't care, doesn't bother me.
Well, I, you know, I, I understand your concerns, I have the same concerns and...
I mean, I'm only one vote, that's, you know, how to be good.
No, I mean, you bring a valid point, but I, I do think, you know...
Maybe we ought to wait till the other two members of the council are here next month, next month, but then go over all the tech and see, vote on it, then, not next month, yes, this month. Twenty, I guess it is.
Yeah, I'd love to get it done too, on that one shot, believe me. There's no doubt about it. I just want to make sure we make the right decision, that's all.
Oh, everybody does.
The right decision is consolidating town services.
Oh, yeah.
Mike's absolutely correct, we've got three buildings and, and we're just using parts of each of them. And even if we can't sell, we can certainly put that, the old town wall out for, for lease and get some income from it.
Right.
Which, what we're doing right now is being a little bit of a penny wise on town floors because we've got holes in all three buildings, we're still providing some services in terms of heat and maintenance to those buildings, and we're not using them, so...
What concerns me is the fact that we have an awful lot of people appealing their assessments. And if that grand list goes down to where we didn't have any money at all, we're going to be up to keep without help. And to wait two weeks and decide, I, I just...
Oh, I have no problem with two weeks whatsoever.
I, I just think that we have to be very careful because I, I've had a lot of complaints about the assessments. And some of the stories I hear are horror stories.
I got hammered, let me tell you.
You don't too?
Oh, my God.
Yeah, I know. So I just want to wait two weeks and, and see what happens with the assessments and other things. This budget today sits at 1.9, almost 2 mil increase in the budget, in case you haven't looked at it.
I don't want to go there.
I don't either. I don't either. But I'm not afraid to vote against the budget, so...
It's gonna be a fun year, guys.
If I have to do it for the third or fourth year in a row, I'll do it.
Exactly.
Do you want to do the hazardous waste thing, or...
Well, you want, you want to pull a vote on it in two weeks, that, that when Alan Donnie are here? Come on, do that, that's fine. If you want to do it tonight, that's fine too, whatever you guys want to do.
No, I think Charlie Ann raises a legitimate... I mean, we've got budgetary constraints and we don't have the full council here in a short period of time. As a delay makes, makes perfect sense.
Two weeks, waiting two weeks is not...
That's fine with me.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, could I, could I ask for some clarification and direction? As I said earlier, we're going to need to have, if we want, if the council wishes to reallocate the capital funds that have already been incurred as part of our debt service and bonding, then we have to have bond counsel draft those resolutions. My recommendation would be to draft those resolutions since, in advance of the next meeting. If the council decides to pull the trigger and to approve that, we have all the documents in place that would be necessary.
The only hesitation I have, Richard, is we had a debate last time whether or not there was a charge associated with it and how much that charge was. Ultimately, it came down to either a nominal charge or no charge.
There was no charge, and I don't anticipate a charge for these documents either.
But if that's not the case, then perhaps we should not draft those...
If that's not the case, I have no authority to expend money to draft those documents, and I will...
Perfect.
And so inform the bond counsel.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
I need a number.
Right. At, at some point next week, we will know what the exact number is for the approximate expenses for the Commerce Drive cell tower. And we have a number that was provided by the fire chief for additional hoses that we'd like to purchase. Our suggestion would be to spend up to the $351,000 in total between those three locations. We're right about at that number right now. And again, this is, this is money that's already part of our debt service schedule.
Right.
And when you look at the, you'll see that for the first time in five or six years, that debt service is actually declining in this year's budget by about $17,000.
So is, would it be one resolution that covers the three areas?
Yes.
Is that it?
Yes.
I would need to break it down specifically to the three uses, right?
So we have, we would have 293 for Stanley T. Williams, approximately $40,000 for the Commerce Drive, and then the remaining balance would be for fire department hose replacement.
They'll be in separate resolutions, the three of them?
No, I think last time it was one, well, we just did the...
It's one resolution and broken down between the different projects? I think that's what Anthony just said.
Anthony, excuse me, one resolution broken down with the three projects?
I can have anybody want to do it.
Can you have the two fire, can you have the two fire department ones separate and the other one separate? That way, that way we'll, we can at least do the fire if we have to. Do you know, Richard, when the appeals assessments are up, how many days it's going to take before we know what's going on there? If anything's changed?
I, I, they were having hearings here until after 11:00 last night, and they're hearing again tonight.
Do you think they'll have any, any answers, if there's any reductions in the grand list?
Typically, there would not be major reductions, there'll be...
Not resonant.
This is not typical, Richard, this is not typical.
No, I'm saying, in the, to my memory, in the, in the past, they have not made major changes to assessments unless they find some type of, of anomaly or error. And the ones, the appeals that are significant dollar amounts generally end up in court. So we won't have a resolution to those within this week.
He's gonna go ahead and draw it up.
All right. We already did the Girl Scouts, we're gonna move on to Greater New Haven Transit District Regional Rides and Service. I believe there's a motion in our package.
I'll move the resolution.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Wentworth, seconded by Counselor Esposito, roll call.
Mayor Kendallora?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Duddy?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Farnin?
Yes.
Counselor Wentworth?
Yes.
IMC Household Hasway Central for 2012.
I'll move the resolution.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Esposito, seconded by Counselor Angeloni, roll call.
Mayor Kendallora?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Duddy?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Farnin?
Yes.
Counselor Wentworth?
Yes.
And a 14, citizen statements and petitions.
First part of talk, if you want to go down. I know you're being cautious, but two weeks is time to wait. But also, you have to be courageous, and I agree with Joe. You can't keep maintaining three buildings, not their max, and paying ridiculous heat, ridiculous electricity. You have to move forward and get all those departments under one billing. And you've already allotted the money through the careful direction of your finance director. And, I mean, two weeks isn't going to buy you that much, except maybe two more councilmen that can put some input. But I think you have to be courageous and move forward. That's a solid building up there. Those buildings are not solid. You were lucky this year because you saved money on both road maintenance, as far as salting and plowing, and heating those buildings. You caught a break this year. You put it off, and then something happens, you stall. If you go into next winter, again, heating three buildings, then you weren't good stewards of my tax dollars, and I would be concerned. I wasn't a big fan of building two separate libraries. And now, again, you've got two brand-new buildings, but you're heating two buildings. And again, so you have to consolidate, you have to be fair to the seniors, but you have to be fair to the citizens, too. So I think it's time to put all your eggs in that one basket that will hold them properly. And if you don't do that, then you're going to have surprises, you're going to have hidden expenses. Both of those buildings are in terrible shape, you have to admit that. I mean, as you walk onto that porch, you never know what day it's going to fall down on you for the rec center. And that range hall, it was built, who knows when? Nowhere is near heat efficient. So again, I know you're facing situations, but at the same time, I don't think, as long as you keep both those buildings open in two more weeks, two more months, another year, that you're not watching my tax dollars wisely.
Well, do you think that people in North Bradford would like to have a 2, 2 mil increase this year? I'm courageous, but I'm not stupid.
Well, I know, but again, do you think that, if that 2 mil is because you spent too much maintaining three buildings, that's not fair to them either. So you do have to weigh your scales, but again, you also have to, as a household, I mean, you wouldn't run your house like that. You wouldn't put one kid in one shed, another kid in another shed, and heat three houses, you know what I'm saying? You would heat three separate buildings.
What happens if nobody rents either one of those buildings? Half the storefronts...
You shut them down, you turn the water off.
Half the storefronts in this town are empty.
So what, you shut them down?
You still got to maintain them, still got to take care of them.
You don't have any expense, you shut them down. You don't keep pouring bad money into bad buildings.
I'm not rushing into anything, to be honest with you.
All right, so again, next winter, we'll have the same discussion, you'll be in the same buildings.
Who said anything about next winter?
We're not, we're not putting it off until next winter.
Well, again, the council's been pretty good about keeping, and I know you have tough decisions.
We have very tough decisions, you have no idea.
But again, that's why you were elected, as a taxpayer, I have my, my right to speak.
Absolutely.
And that's what I'm doing, and I understand if you have to make tough decisions, but you've come up with the ways to kind of work around this.
I didn't like the two libraries either, I fought that like crazy.
You know, so again, that was, but times are a little bit better back then, to a degree. We were coming into this recession at the time. And you, the wheels were already rolling. We came close to filing down where we could make them square wheels, but they were still going.
Stop laughing, Brandon, again.
Again, I, I mean, we have to move forward and, and do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Clint. Are there any other citizen statements? May have a motion to go into executive session.
Some will.
Second.
Including the town manager and the town attorney. Moved by Counselor Esposito, seconded by Counselor Farnin, roll call.
Mayor Kendallora?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Duddy?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Farnin?
Yes.
Counselor Wentworth?
Yes.